Okay. I'd like to call this planning board to order Wednesday, February 12th. We have a quorum, John, Jim, Sarah, myself, and Barbara. And we have our trustee secretary Susan and town planner Max. Um, let's see. Any adjustments to the agenda relatively straightforward tonight? There being none. Citizen comments. Are there any citizens' comments not related to the pre-application solar farm? There being none. Minutes of the last meeting, January 8th. Does everyone had a chance to review those?
Mm-hmm.
Prepared to vote on this? Any modifications or edits to it?
Considering how much ground we covered, I thought Susan did a good job.
Oh, sorry to me. I didn't have any changes at all.
For the record.
So, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Did you have something?
No.
You made your own motion, I think was the... Yeah. But it's okay, carried.
I did?
Yeah.
I was calling for a motion. I... That's the first. I've never done that before.
Yeah.
Okay.
We won't let you do it again.
Well, that means somebody else has to be chairman from this henceforth.
Yeah. I don't think so.
Nice try.
Trying to get out of your job.
Yes. Okay. Drat, didn't work. New business. Is there anything besides the pre-application?
Not tonight.
Okay. So, solar farm pre-application, 441 North Nobleboro Road. And could you please...
Sure. I'll stand up here.
...announce yourself and...
I'm Tom Tatero. I work for State Tech Consulting, or Environmental Consulting Firm out of Topson. And we're working for Sunraise Development, who is the developer for this proposed project. And you may be aware that the legislature passed LD 1711, which allows for basically community solar farms to directly connect to the grid and produce energy for CMP customers. And so they've been actively kind of going after sites all around Maine. And we've been helping them kind of screen them and telling them which ones they should stay away from. They quickly learned that there's a lot of wetlands and vernal pools in Maine. And so we've really pared down their list and they've landed on a few good ones in our mind, in their mind, and this is one of them.
Okay. Can I just jump in there real quick? What disqualifies a site? Well, I mean, you say you've got a lot of sites. Just, is there a specific set of geology that you don't like or is not proven to set up?
It's really, these are small kind of community-based solar farms, so they're pretty lean as far as budgets go. And to get into the whole weeds of, you know, DEP and Army Corps permitting, it's really just not cost-effective for them. So they try to minimize and avoid as much as possible.
I see.
So you're saying they're community solar farms, so these are pre-owned, I mean, pre- the ownership, the power is going to certain households already, or is it, are you selling it right through the...
They line that up kind of closer to construction, but typically they'll have a couple of large buyers, like a school or a business, and then they give you up the rest throughout.
So who's "they"? Sunraise?
Sunraise, yeah.
Who's doing that?
Yep. They coordinate all that, yeah. And it can be really any CMP customer in the state.
Let us see. So, is, is, I'm getting way ahead of myself. But is, for instance, China subsidizes all those solar panels and all that. Is it cost-effective, this solar energy, for CMP to say you can come in there? How does that work? Who, who wins here? Or is it just an ecological scenario that people are trying to address?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's a renewable energy scenario that they're trying to address and as well as they're, you know, they have a need for the energy, clean energy and...
I can probably answer that.
Sure.
Since I'm, my husband and I are hosting a solar, community solar farm on our property. So the, the landowner will be given a lease payment every year by all the collective owners of the power being generated. So the landowner is getting some funds. The whole association is going to pull together and share the insurance costs and things like that. But probably, for the most part, everybody will make back their investment within 10 years and this, and these solar panels go for 30 to 40 years. So after 10 years, it's totally free power. It's basically kind of a very generic...
Okay. So it's basically not right off, you're not going to save any money, but down the road?
Right.
I see. So maybe we could let Tom roll through his...
Sure, I'm sorry.
What he wants to present.
Yeah, so basically, this is the layout that we've kind of landed on, given the constraints of the land and while trying to maximize their power output. I think it's around three megawatts. And part of that bill is that they need to stay under five megawatts in order to be able to plug into the existing infrastructure, nearby substations and that sort of thing. And so that, this is the best layout that maximizes everything and as well as minimizes impacts. And really here to just kind of go through the site plan process and...
Do you have any...
Answer questions from you guys.
Well, do you, did you have anything you wanted to say about the, these documents that you've presented here? Is there anything you can lead us through here, or...
So, I mean, you can see there's, we've mapped all the resources on the property. There's a vernal pool, we had to work around, wetlands that will be crossed by a bridge, otherwise not impacted at all.
Why is the eastern edge of all the rows of panels so, what's, what's dictating how long those are?
The, on the eastern side there is the resource protection zone, so they're kind of further pitched by that.
For the wetlands?
Yep. So they had intended to go even farther, but it was just too restrictive based on local resources.
It would be nice if you diagrammed that when you submit the thing and what the distance required and stuff.
Yep.
But that's, that's what the, that's what the arcs are?
Right, that's, that's a 250 feet.
Oh, okay. That's...
I think that's what that is.
Yep.
250 feet.
Right.
Okay.
So, that says shoreline protection setback, but it's, it's wetlands, not shoreline? How is...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the resource protection zone as defined in your land ordinance and...
Yep, okay.
It was kind of more of a general blob shape, but we delineated the wetland to get it more refined.
So your fence would go in initially, and that establishes all the work from the inside of that fence back? So you don't go into that zone at all?
Right. And there is some, they'd like to do some selective clearing in that zone for shade management, and that was kind of one of my questions that I would have for you was, you know, what's allowed for clearing in that resource, resource protection zone? I think there's, you know, the typical 40 percent calculation.
But how far back away from the edge of your fence line would you even have to do that, given...
Not very far. Based on the scale, it's only, you know, 50 feet at the most in the widest areas, and it's not clearing everything. It's clearing the tall trees that are there.
So one fifth of the way, the distance back. But that's only on the east side, so it's...
And that's really just for, you know, morning sun purposes, to reduce the shade.
Tom, can Sarah do...
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Is your system a photovoltaic system, or is it the other kind?
It is, yes. I mean, I'm, I'm not too familiar with all the ins and outs of the equipment, but yes, it's a photovoltaic system. And they have inverters that convert the power to, you know, whatever it is, AC or DC, and ties into the grid near the, in the street.
From DC to AC, and that's what lets it go on the grid. Yep.
John? I was just going to say, this is probably a silly question, but in the winter, when it's all snowy, does someone go out and wipe off all of these things? I mean, how do you get, how do you get energy all the time, all year round?
I mean, just like any other solar panel, you do have your cloudy days or your snowy days. But I think they're designed at a pitch where it slides off. There's really no maintenance at all. They're not, they don't swivel, they're just fixed tilts. And they, they kind of go over the slope of the land, you know, they try to minimize grading and stuff as much as possible. Be cost-effective, really.
Which is right down the road. I've never seen them covered with anything and, I don't think they'll fall or anything.
And there's no people or buildings or anybody around? I mean, just a general question. What is, what is people when they don't like these solar farms? What is their main objection to it?
I, I would imagine it's just a visual...
Just a visual, and can anybody see this?
Probably, you know, as you're coming up north on North Nobleboro Road, you pass the, the large field there. I would imagine you get some glimpse and then maybe it's from the entrance itself. But there's a pretty good water buffer for the most part.
Sarah?
Will you need to install any really bright lights on this property?
No, they have, you know, one, one area here up near the north that has inverters and batteries and, you know, there might be a spotlight if someone had to do maintenance at night, but for the most part, there's no lights or anything.
Okay. So the photovoltaic is lower heat than the thermal kind?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. I don't know much either. And there's, won't be any bright lights? I'm asking for the birds and insects.
No, no bright lights. You know, they'll come in and do maintenance once or twice a year. They'll mow the vegetation so it doesn't get up, you know, above the solar panels. You know, once or twice a year, they have to do maintenance on the inverters.
So it looks like there's one new power pole and the rest of the way is buried?
Yes, I think, I think there'll be more power poles because they'll have a bridge to get over that one wetland. So from that little pad mounted, the inverter station there, I think it will be above ground to the, to the street. So, you know, maybe four or five poles, I'm not sure. That's still in the design.
So, and do you talk about the bridge anywhere?
Um, I think, just, there's just one call out. We're still, you know, doing our civil design. But it will be, you know, probably a concrete to cast, footers with a timber mat bridge. And all that does is just avoid the wetland impact and permitting for that.
Question on...
See where the bridge is?
Oh, go ahead.
It's, if you look, there's the red line that represents the access road and then...
This is the access one.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, I see. I got it.
Across the skinniest part of the wetland.
I got it.
I was going to say, there is a lot of sensitive area around there, it appears. In the very act of putting in all of these panels, the construction, the trucks and all that, will that affect the, the lay of the land just because of all of the workmen and all of that is going into actually setting this up?
I mean, it's, if you've been out there, it's pretty well logged and disturbed already, but it's, you know, they, they come in, they clear what's left and stump it. And, but for the most part, there's not a lot of bulldozing or grading. They, they're able to kind of run with the curvature of the ground and there are some...
So is this a field now?
Um, no. Kind of towards the beginning, around the cemetery, it's, it's rather open, but it's all considered forested, I would say.
And then they'll seed after the...
Yep, they'll put down, you know, an erosion control seed mix and let it come up naturally and just mow it whenever they need to.
So this setback from the vernal pool, how are we to interpret that one?
So that's 250 feet, and that's a, that's a main DEP regulation. And you're allowed, with a permit by rule from the main DEP, you're allowed to impact 25 percent of that buffer, that entire buffer.
Okay.
And that also includes any existing development, so you have to take that into account.
Okay. And?
And we're at right around, I think it was like 24 percent.
Where does it...
Where is the pool?
The pool is kind of the darker red outline in that wetland.
Square. This, well, this trapezoid thing right there, the dark red.
And that was, you know, the survey, I surveyed it in October, so it's, we're actually calling it a potential vernal pool. In my eyes, it looked like something that had the potential to be a significant vernal pool, but we, we plan on going out there to confirm during the appropriate spring season. So it may go away, it may, we may confirm that it is a significant vernal pool, but for now, we're just playing the conservative route and calling it one.
Okay. And where does that, where do you have that, that? I didn't see the 24 percent number.
I don't know if it says that specifically, but it has the area calculations in that area details box.
So this red blob is with the 25 percent accounted for?
Yes. Yeah. So you can see where, where the panels and the road are inside of that red bubble. That area is less than 25 percent of the whole bubble.
So you're allowed, when you calculate the bubble, to take credit for the land across the street? That doesn't quite seem...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of an arbitrary buffer that they put on it, but that's their guidance. And you also take into account the road and any other houses that are there. That factors into your 25 percent. So even though you didn't build that, you still have to account for it.
So do you have to build this road, this access road? All the work is going to go in and out of this road to the, to the inverters and whatnot, and that's also going to be your access work road into the site?
Yep, that'll remain, yeah. That, just the red, red line. You know, there may be other trails or whatnot during construction, but as far as what's left behind, that'll be the only driveway and road.
Is there sort of an access there now?
Yeah, right at the beginning, there's, you know, a log landing and a gravel driveway that goes in, you know, 100 yards or so. Goes right to that cemetery.
Why are the wetlands to the north and west treated differently than the wetlands to the east? Why the setback on the, on the wetlands to the east, but basically no setback to the other wetlands?
Right. That comes from your land use ordinance that define that as a resource protection area. And I think it's because if you look, if you could see farther off this map, it's a big open marsh, and it was defined as such in your...
Ah, okay.
Got it.
And that is, that marshy area, if I don't, if I recall correctly, that water table feeds down and the town well is, is east...
Yeah, it's up past the dairy farm.
It's east-southeast of that. And I think there's also drainage sort of comes down off of that towards the road. Does it go under the road to the river?
I'm not sure, but that, that would make sense why that would be called a resource protection.
So I think that's probably what's behind that, but...
If you want me to actually clarify that, just to...
Sure, yeah.
Just to go on to what you were saying, Jim, about why the, the east one is different from the west. That eastern wetland does have a way of connecting over to the Madam McRiver, to the stream that gets to the overall Madam McRiver, whereas the one on the west is rather more isolated case, so it doesn't, it's more of its on its own.
Just, just a low spot.
Right. And I think I advised, um, and everyone involved in the project early on, that it's best also contact main DEP. Main DEP, because the state also likes to change what's considered resource protection, what's limited residential. So it's, it was best for them to check with the state before.
Yep. And we've met with DEP and Army Corps of Engineers and specifically went through this project and many others and kind of edited our whole process and had them confirm, you know, we need this permit, we don't need it or...
So this section of solar panels up, budding up against that western wetish area, are you regrading this site at all?
I mean, there might be some minimal stuff, you know, some of the high points, but it'll be minimal.
Essentially no regrading. Flow will happen as it's always happened, is what you're saying.
Yep. There's some, in the back there, there's some representative photos of other projects that they've built where you can kind of see how the solar panels can just kind of flow with the, with the land and don't have to blast anything and...
Max, I have, I think I have a question for you. I just spent three weeks in South Carolina, the Low Country, they call it, and it looks just like how this setup is. Down there, though, erosion and storms and all that change the topography almost weekly. If something, if all of the permits and all the various graphics here are right, but something happens during the course of it, maybe more water comes in, what, how does that work with, you know, are they obliged to do something different if something changes in the site?
So are you saying that under the hypothetical that you approve it, assuming the plan is as it is?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And then let's say a massive storm happens?
Yeah, something, something changes it, some rather, it affects the actual whole setup.
Um, well, first of all, I, I will be checking with main DEP very close to when this actually comes in as a full application on that type of scenario, but I believe unless DEP decides to change that area as an entire resource protection area, I believe they'll be fine as they are. I'll have to check with main DEP. It's a different area.
What about hay baling it to minimize erosion and stuff? Is that something that's...
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll have a whole erosion and sedimentation control plan. They do have a stormwater permit that they'll do through main DEP, which is again a permit by rule because they're staying under an acre of impervious area. So...
So I'm assuming that part of your application would be description of what you, because this, you're showing pictures here that you gave us that shows they're using a silt fence approach.
Yep.
So that would be part of the application?
That'll be shown on the end. We get the actual site, site plans and design, you know, that it'll spell all that out.
Okay.
Have a written erosion control plan, show this areas of silt fence on the plans.
Okay.
And this, and these panels are supported by the screws types? It's not on the weighted, weighted concrete things?
Right, it's just a stationary screw that goes through the ground.
So I have...
Not much soil disturbance, in other words, when they do that, really.
Not really burying anything.
Okay.
Pretty minimal.
On this second locust map here, I'm a little, there's a border, I'm not sure I understand this border at the top. It looks like the outline of...
This is this property discussion, property map?
It's a, it's a large property map, which you don't have, but...
Yep.
So this orange line is the periphery of the property?
That orange line is my wetland delineation limits.
Oh, okay.
So for whatever reason, when I was out there with a GPS, it was just a little bit off, but everything's on the other page, it's been trimmed to that property line.
Okay.
So that's just, you know, mapping within the tolerance of the mapping.
So, so in reality, it, it's within this, okay, within the tax map property line along the north border?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm, okay. It would probably be a good idea to make sure that's all resolved in all of the documents for the application. That would be pretty confusing. We don't want to be approving something that goes over the property line. Okay.
And this, this second page is really just the, the initial survey, you know, topo survey, boundary survey, so that information will be incorporated into the design.
Yeah, well, it's helpful, very helpful to have, so we appreciate that being included.
Tom, tell us a little bit more about the developer.
Sunraise, they are kind of all been doing a lot out through, in England. I believe they're based out of Massachusetts, but they do work, you know, throughout the country. And really in, in Maine, they're focusing on these smaller distributed generation facilities.
So who is Soul Revel?
Soul Revel does their, their layout, their solar design, like the actual panels design. So it's just another, you know, engine.
So they're a subcontractor?
Right.
And Stantec is what, the overall head of it, like a, what is Stantec's role in all of this?
Stantec is the environmental permitting role, basically. We're just environmental consultants. We, we subcontract out the engineering. Actually, Stantec is doing the engineering on this, but it's kind of our separate engineering entity.
I see.
Sister company?
Not sister company, but we don't talk to, we don't talk to the engineers that much.
So is this, is this property already owned, or is it part, how, do they already own this property, or...
No, they're, they'll have a lease agreement with the landowner.
Okay. Okay.
And is this chain link fence with a barbed wire necessary?
Um, I think...
That you've got in the...
Does it have, I didn't know it had barbed wire, but...
It does. It's not...
Wow.
It'd look like Waldenboro.
I mean, I, yeah, I think it's a typical chain link fence. Yeah, I think they don't want anyone throwing rocks at the fence, just, just to, for the very control.
So it's going to stop all wildlife from passing through?
No, I think they leave a little, you know, six inch gap at the bottom.
At the bottom?
Yeah.
Huh. So skinny wildlife.
Yes, short.
Short stuff, yeah.
Frogs. If they hop right.
Those deer can really kind of wiggle their way.
Groundhogs.
If you do, yeah.
But so we would see, given the proximity of the road, you'd probably see that chain link fence with a barbed wire? Where's your ribbon up the road?
It's possible. And the fence doesn't really start till after the cemetery there, where you see a little gate called... You may see it from farther down south on the road, near the field.
Where it's close to the road, that's where it is.
But there, yeah, where the clearing limit's going to come out to the field, but...
Because that'll be pretty clear, because that's south, the south section of the panels, so pretty clear through the road, right?
Yeah, you can see the clearing limit.
From here to here, it says 384 feet from nearest panel to the road. So it's really what's the distance between that, this, like this panel and the, and the fence, right? To see how, how close that fence is.
So here's the road.
Yeah.
And with all this being cleared here, because it's south...
Right.
You'd probably see it. I mean, I would imagine it's a reasonable height.
Well, that elev, it's elevated, so you would be looking up at it, I guess, yeah.
I'm not sure how elevated it is.
Well, you can see, these are the, these are the elevation lines.
Right, we're going, we're looking up, going up the hill, yeah.
So...
I'd like more information about the fence when you come. How it is and...
Yeah, and the, the distance from the fence, because here there's quite a, at this, at the southern terminus, there's, there's probably the largest difference between the first panel and the fence. So there's a pretty big gap there. So it says that the, you've, you've got a line here showing the panel that's closest to the road is 384 feet.
Yep.
But it'd be useful to understand the distances from each end of that, the south fence, to the road. Because that would, that's, that could be important relative to the vision of what you're, of what you're looking at.
The closest piece of the project to the road, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
That's like standing on the end of the parking lot here, looking past the, far into the parking lot in front of the building. It's not, it's not actually that far.
And it's, it's, it's unclear why the fence is so far from the panels at that one spot.
Just because of those three little, three little guys?
Well, still...
And maybe that's something that we can, we can adjust, that, you know, the clearing goes farther south in that area just for shade management, because that's, that's due south.
Ah, I see.
But maybe it's, it's possible to pinch that fence in a little bit more.
Okay, because you're trying to get, you want to make sure you maximize the southern exposure at that end. Okay.
I mean, I think it's really cool to see all these panels, but then if you're putting the chain link fence and the barbed wire in front of it, it's kind of like, ooh.
Yeah.
You do have to protect your investment, I understand that, but kind of a shame.
Scott?
Yeah, Tom?
I have a quick question, kind of a, it's, it's specific, but it's a generalization.[1615.13] We've, I've never been on a site visit, and, and it's, it's one thing looking at these two dimensional things. Is something like this, for instance, worth us going out and having a site visit to, just to see the lay of this? I, I mean, is that, do we normally do that?
Well, we don't frequently do it, but we do it, it's, I mean, I'm open to consider it if-
I just think it would give everybody, at least me, a better understanding of the topography here. It's hard to, for me to visualize sometimes, you know, you see all these little lines and spigots and all that.
It's pretty wooded, wooded, I mean, it's a little bit, some stuff has happened, but, you know, I'm not sure, at what point would you get the best?
Right, I mean, it would be nice to see what people would see, or get an idea, before you vote on something. Because you, you know, you don't know if you're just going on this and, and verbal stuff.
You want to see what the sight lines are.
Yeah, exactly, because that's what people are going to be, I, I think that's reasonable.
This would be a good time of year to do it, to, you know, leaf off and you'd see what the maximum use should be of that.
Right, okay. What kind of, what timing were you, was your, what were you anticipating for timing for a full application?
So the, once we get, you know, all our permits in from you, from the state, from Army Corps, or we won't have any Army Corps, but then they submit an application, Sunrise submits an application to the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, and they'll kind of decide which projects they want to pick out of that list to go into the first round of these kind of distributed generation facilities. And the, the top picks get the best price. So that's why there's kind of a rush to get, you know, the, the best projects in now. And then they do a second round, and that price isn't so good, and a third round, and then by then, probably, things will be saturated and that'll be the end of it.
Okay, so, but when would you anticipate coming to the board with a full, complete application?
Probably as soon as possible.
Okay. Well, because, because the, if, if we do a site visit, that's a public meeting.
Yep.
And so it has to go through the same, you know, public announcement in a, you know, with, with ten days or whatever it is before the meeting.
Right.
So if we do decide we want to do, we do that, we need to, we need to set that up.
Yep, I think kind of internally, we've set a, you know, a May deadline to get all permits in hand.
Okay.
And then I think it's July is when the PUC starts making decisions.
You mentioned stormwater management plan?
Yes.
What do you think's gonna happen with that?
So that will be done through the DEP's permit by rule, which they will beat the qualifications for, you know, less than an acre of impervious area, less than, you know, twenty acres as a whole. So it kind of fits them into a lower category, where they don't have to go through the, the chapter five hundred individual permit.
But do you imagine there's gonna be like a swale that will collect water temporarily?
They'll have, you know, roadside ditches and turnouts and stuff like that, but it's not gonna be any engineered detention ponds, or it, it won't require that due to the, the nature of the disturbance, it just will be that minimal.
Does CMP have to do anything to accept the power?
They will put a pole on the road.
And then it just ties into the existing lines that are there?
Yep.
Seems like a lot of power to just drop into that local service line.
Yeah, so, so they, Sunrise knows that, you know, there's three phase power going up this road, three lines overhead, and there's whatever substation that goes into nearby, there's capacity, I think they're, and they've figured all that out and done their calculations.
That's good, that's less work to do.
Why wanna, why this site is chosen, really, that's it, so.
Why is there three phase power running up that road, because of the industrial site?
I don't know.
Why is there three phase power going up there now?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Bob, do you have an answer for them?
Is there three phase power on that road?
Yeah.
I don't, I, well, I actually, it might be because George Scott has that industrial park just off that road.
Yeah.
And, and they need three phase power in there. I don't know whether they run it up thirty-two, though, or across Noble Row Road, but certainly it would make sense. Also, at the end of Noble Row, you have the spear farm, and they would probably need three phase power.
Maybe, yeah.
That might be it.
It also might just be going to the neighborhood town.
And you need it at the transfer station, too.
Oh, that too.
Yeah, I think you would need, you'd need three phase to run that, that compressor that they have? That's three phase power, yeah.
Yeah, it is definitely.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
So, yeah, go ahead. I have a question that is sort of a general, somewhat philosophical question. Not necessarily directed at you, but you're here, and I'm kind of curious to know if you've ever thought about it before. These are the kinds of things I think about. And I'll use my car as a metaphor. I have a ten-year-old car, and it's all paid for, and I love it. I could go out and buy an electric car and be much more environmentally cool. But there's so much cost involved in making that electric car that I don't think it's environmentally responsible for me to buy an electric car. I should probably drive mine until it dies and could be a chicken coop or something. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So, with these kinds of projects, does anyone do any studies to figure out what the entire environmental cost of all the materials and everything going into the project, like, everything going into the project, and what, what that environmental, cost isn't the right word, what would be the impact? Impact, yes, thank you.
It's a trade-off of some sort.
Yeah, and, and then cutting all those trees down, which we need trees, how, how do, how do you balance that out between all the impact of all of that and the benefit of something else?
I mean, the short answer is, I don't know, but, you, you know, for whatever company, you know, business school that they're going to sell the power to, I mean, it offsets all, all of that, that they use.
But we don't know how much it offsets, I mean, I'm not criticizing you at all, but we don't know how much it offsets, I mean, I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, no, it's a good question I can ask.
So I think there's, there's a couple of things going on. One is the states and the country's desire to diminish the CO2 emissions and fossil fuel, and bring in alternative fuels, which is why I think the act was passed and the, to, to spur on this, this type of development.
But what is the co-, impact and cost of getting to that point?
And that's the second point. They used to make photocells, I made the raw product that went into them. And our calculation said it was three or four years of running it paid off, because it was very energy intensive to, to make the photocells. Poly-silicon, yeah, which is the most expensive part. About three or four years, and you, you've got that power back in, in terms of savings.
So the impact is a zero?
It's, it's, yeah.
Not zero?
It's probably well beyond that, with the forty years of, of forty years of potential life.
Yeah.
And then, like you said, you factor in, you know, tree clearing and equipment usage while you're building it, and, you know, so maybe it's closer to ten years, but-
Yeah, and my numbers were purely construction of the cells.
Right, yeah.
The panels.
So this little inverter building, just when you brought up lights, I, I didn't bring it up because it is so, set so far back, but there is glowing, and there is a little bit of a hum to these things, but it's quite off the road, so.
Yeah, there is a little bit of noise, only during the day when it's producing power.
Is it gonna bother the insects?
Pretty minimal, I, I think he, Jim told me that you're a hundred feet away in here, but you can hear it when you're right next to it.
Twenty feet away, but I, I don't know what they hear. There is a hum.
Yeah, but is there a light?
There, yeah, there's little glow lights on the inverter panels, yeah.
LED light or something, but as far as, you know, spotlights or anything like that, only if, for whatever reason, they had to go in at night, would there be.
Are the, are these lights on all night?
Yes.
So does it affect migration patterns?
No, it's not bright lights, it's like a tiny, tiny, tiny light on a panel.
It's like the light on the corner of your TV that tells you when it's on, off, that little blue. Okay, put a piece of, put a piece of tape over it. Then you definitely shouldn't buy a new car.
I'm glad we've got that stuff, thank you.
I do have an electric car.
It would be more energy, I mean, environmentally to run your old car.
There it is.
But they make cars pretty efficiently.
Yeah, but it costs so much to make the car.
But the materials, it's the materials that go into the car, if it's an electric car, the batteries is where a lot of the, a lot of the environmental impact is in going in there.
And transporting the car from where it's made to where somebody buys it. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff.
To your point, inverters are about two football fields off the road.
Yeah.
So there's, I don't think there's gonna be much, much, much noise. Any feedback from neighbors, do the neighbors know about it, have you talked to any of them? What's the reaction, if there has been, any?
I don't know.
I did want to open it up, if we're done, to any comments from citizens present, and maybe there's an abutter present. Is there any comments from the floor? Please, could you stand up and tell us who you are, so we can-
Yeah, I'm Ron Phillips, who lives here in Waldaburrow.
Uh-huh.
So, Sunrise, I know a little bit about, just to put in a word for them, I thought they might actually be here tonight, but they're a small but growing entrepreneurial group, I think they're based in Portsmouth, if I'm correct. And they've got quite a good team, they have a website, and I suggest you visit it. And they've got all the bio-information of the principals, they're quite a youthful and enthusiastic team. I think one of the, at least one of the five or six staff, founder, whatever, is originally from Booty Harbor, went to high school there.
Pat Jackson, yeah, he's from-
Yeah, and his father ran the Y or something, or some, some association, so that's a little bit of a connection there. Second, let me see, I had a, let me see, I had another comment I wanted to make. Oh, on the, on the environmental benefits of solar, that's a really important question. And there is, there, there's a lot of information out there and analysis on actually answering that question.
Good.
And I'd be glad to do a little bit of a search and get some articles to you all, but I, I, many of us have visited that. I don't know the percentage at the top of my head, but there is a net benefit relating to the whole spectrum and lifecycle and so forth. The other, you know, there's another debate, too, in terms of electric versus the combustion engine. I don't know if you know about that debate. You can get a lot of good engineers and scientists in the same room, and they'll, they'll figure that one out. And of course, you get into solar and battery sort of issues, and you can get into the issue of how lithium is mined, and child labor and all that sort of stuff, but you get into that with a lot of things, too. So it's a, it's a very important question to keep an eye on and so forth. A question I had was, well, you know, a couple more things, but a question I had to ask you was, who, who's gonna purchase this electricity? There's a lot of interest in more local buyers of that, to the, or regional or whatever, so that might be something to, to think about. And I'm not sure you have a buyer yet lined up, but-
No, they, they said that they typically line that up, you know, when they get closer to-
When they get closer to, yeah. The other thing is that the econo-, there was, Waldaburrow has an economic development committee, as you know, and it's, part of its agenda is to take a look at energy issues of all sorts, because there are other types of energy, renewable energy, that is. And it strikes me, Bob is aware of this, is Chair of the Board, that the Economic Development Committee of the Town of Waldaburrow, I don't know if they've seen this project, Bob, but it might be interesting to have, kick it back, I don't want to tie things up here, but kick it back to them to make sure they've taken a look, because they have a lot of knowledge, too, about some of the questions that you might have, so just a suggestion there. And lastly, in terms of visiting sites, well, you know, Waldaburrow does have a site out of the landfill, as you know. And I don't know if you've visited that, but it's doing its job, it's a hundred and ten kilowatt, and I don't know the precise cost savings, but the town's, you know, through its relationship, is saving a little bit of money a year, and more of that is in play. But as far as site visits go, there, there was a time, at one point, Bob, I think you remember, we were looking at taking the select board and anybody who wanted to go visit some of these sites, because we're gonna be looking at a lot, a lot larger grid scale projects like this, and we want to understand them better and so forth, so I'd be glad to help arrange a site or be involved with that, if, if I can help. So my question, I guess you answered that on the on-taker, we don't know yet.
To the, to that point, Bob, maybe you have the answer. Does the town of Waldaburrow or the people of Waldaburrow get any direct benefit from having this solar farm where it is?
Well, I'm not gonna address this solar farm, but I can address the solar array that the town leases right now.
Okay, yeah, that would be, yes.
About four or five years. We're paying ten point nine cents per kilowatt hour for the electricity that that array generates for the town.
Right.
And you know what, you pay your CMP per kilowatt hour.
Too much.
So you're, you've got an incremental savings right there. And then after year six, we have an option to buy that, the town does.
Yeah.
And I hope we buy it, because then we're paying zero for all of the electricity that those arrays generate to power town office, school, friendship school and so forth, the water department pumps. It's all factored in, and I, I've just completed a sort of a review, a twelve-month review, of how we've come out on this. And it's very much in line with expectations.
And not to jump ahead, but would that be something the town-
I would be the first one to sign the library up for any energy you guys produce.
Yeah, so, I mean, that wouldn't necessarily be the case with this project, unless, unless the buyer didn't happen to be in this town.
They'll be looking for big users, I'm sure.
So, any, any other-
So it may not be Waldaburrow users.
It can, it can technically be any CMP.
Anybody in CMP, yeah. So the other thing about this we should be aware of is that, right now, as far as, this is like, this is pretty big. In fact, how many kilowatts is, oh, there it is there, okay.
Almost three.
Yep.
Say three, like, three kilowatts.
The only benefit besides the electrical part for whoever is partial members of this association, this landowner is still just paying his property taxes. So the town isn't, this is commercial, commercial scale, so does the town get any tax benefit, is, is the other question?
Right now, it's, that's still being ironed out with the state, I think as it stands right now, they, the Sunrise has a tax incentive through the state where they will pay the town's taxes, basically. But it could, could be different by the time things all shake out, and Sunrise is perfectly willing to pay whatever taxes are necessary.
Is it burying town to town right now, as far as your experience is?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know what taxes are not in my wheelhouse, but-
Well, the issue, do we know of any, do we know of any towns that have a different tax rate for a solar farm compared to woods?
It could be, I mean, Portland's probably, the Portland area is probably different than rural area. But it's just an issue that, you know, it's-
Well, I'm looking at Bob and Kate, just in case you know.
Yeah, I'm looking at me. Some towns do tax solar panels and some don't.
Yep.
And that, that's a good point, Barb.
At the, at a certain point of the scale, it should be.
That's right.
And especially if it's not benefiting anybody in town, and it's all going elsewhere, you know, something to consider.
Well, certainly, we would encourage people in town, companies in town, to sign up for the lower rate. You would think that it would behoove them to do so, but, but there is, there would be a rationale for an economically beneficial business operating on a property to pay a different tax than simple, you know, simple woods, for example.
Capital improvement being made on a property.
Yes.
It should increase the, the value of the property.
Well, that, and that may be just where it gets captured, but, but, you know, the, it's a question that we ought to think about pretty quick, because what I don't want to have happen, I, I don't think, to, to then change the tax, what, what they're going into business based on a certain tax understanding, that then the town decides, oh, this is a great opportunity, and we're gonna raise your taxes.
Right.
We could do it, but it would be nice to get that resolved before we get a lot more of these, that, that would be the only issue.
So I'm not sure if we're the committee to do that, but-
I, I agree with you, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up with, with everyone here.
The Chair of the Select Board is right there, so it's probably fair to tell them that this is a serious thing.
Well, the one thing that benefits the town is if we, if the lines all go down because of a storm, they're gonna get some attention here, right away, from the powers that be, because they want to get it up and running again. So that's one way of looking at a benefit. Speaking as a person who's many days of power.
Do you know whether or not Mr. Reed intends to continue grazing cattle on that property?
As far as I know, I, I couldn't tell you for sure, but, yes. I think it was, this is kind of a, you know, a supplement to his, to his land, to his income, and-
Right.
You know, he didn't, he wanted more of a passive use, rather than subdividing or building houses and-
Okay.
I would go to the conclusion I was gonna go to, because I don't know the answers.
Well, they'd have to get through that chain link fence.
Are there any of the comments from the floor? Okay, to circle back to, Jim started that whole thing by asking about the abutters, and so there are no abutters present. But Max, you, I'm assuming you notified the abutters for the, about this meeting? Or was it, because it's a pre-application, so the abutters have not been notified.
Right, and that's why I wanted Lincoln County News and the Courier-Gazette here.
Okay.
So it's, because it's the same principle with the eighty gray something.
Got you, okay. So that being the case, if there are the, and I'll give another opportunity for questions, but I wanted to go back to whether we wanted to do a site visit or not. Is it something that people, that the board wants to do?
It seems like, shouldn't we wait until it's a real application?
Well, here's my concern, is that we have to have, it's a public meeting, whether they, it's a question of timing, and if we wait till the next meeting to vote to decide to have a site visit, then, you know, it, it makes it more difficult for Max, and scheduling it may delay another month when it actually comes to it. If we've decided that we're gonna do a site visit, then we can coordinate between Max and the applicant on the timing for a site visit, because that'll give time for Max to put in a public notice, and we can do it. And then whenever they get their application ready, we can, we can, and, and maybe that'll be simultaneous, but-
Do we have to have a quorum at a site meeting?
A site visit is traditionally treated like a public meeting, so I would put out notices, and it's not required, I don't believe it's required to have a quorum. But it would be better if we just don't have that question, and I would assume everyone would want to see this.
Well, Ted might not make it, and I might have the flu.
They're already making the excuse, we don't even want to take it.
I mean, I don't need to see it, it's what I'm saying, but-
But we don't, if it's observational, there's no, there's no, we're not gonna be holding a vote.
And that's why I'll-
So I don't believe that there's a need for, unless we've, we'd have to have a quorum to vote, but I don't think, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I for one would definitely want to go for a site visit. I mean, I, I think it's reasonable to assume that you could assess it better if you see what you, what you're going to vote on. Don't you think?
Well, you'd have to have it, is it flagged? Is it marked? Anything?
Yeah, I mean, you could put where.
I think the boundaries might be.
That's right. Where the bound, boundaries are, you know, just to get an idea.
Like property boundaries. I don't think it.
Yeah, the property boundaries.
Nothing else is laid out.
Yeah.
So in other words, you're going to see anything in.
Wondering through the woods.
It might be hard to see anything, really.
I, I like the woods, but, um.
I mean, I didn't even, I didn't even like the wetlands.
Well, I'm not, I, you know, personally, I'm.
That's just my own feelings. I, I would be, probably my sensibilities would tell me I would have to abstain from voting on something if I didn't actually visualize it. I don't know what I'm really voting on.
I mean, I have a ton of pictures, if that helps.
What would be the things about it, an application like this that would say to you not to?
Well, how close these things are to people visualizing it, what the wetlands look like, what, you know, kind of the whole lay of the land, so to speak.
I understand that. I understand the concern from that standpoint. On the other hand, the ordinance gives distance requirements as well as the state regulations and the distances are specified. So, just asking. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, but I don't, I respectfully disagree.
Okay, that's fair.
I walk and down that road several times a month for the obvious, be very with you, Bob, for obvious reasons, right? I bring my own trash and, and I, and I know where the, uh, Christian school is. I mean, I can picture this, this location that they've been, been logging up there. And it's a football field off that house. I mean, I can pretty much gauge what you're going to be able to see from the road in the winter and nothing in the summer when it's all leafed out from, from, from that standpoint. So I, I, I understand the natural curiosity wanting to go see, but I don't, I don't see that there'd be much benefit. I, I, when I thought this site was someplace else, I drove by it twice, just to, just for that specific reason. I mean, you can get what you want to get for, for, usually with a drive-by. And I just look at that as homework coming into a meeting. Uh, but that's, that's my take, John.
I understand that. Well, and I'd, I'd encourage you, John, to do that if, I mean, I'm sensing, I don't know, if you want to make a motion and we can vote on it if we're going to, because I think that would be, what would be required.
Right.
Or you can take the opportunity to, to, to do what Jim is suggesting and we can bring it up at the next meeting if you would.
I may, I may just take a ride down there myself. Yeah.
Can we do that?
There's one other option that we haven't talked about, and that is that, John, maybe you could accept an invitation from the gentleman to, to be taken out there personally to have a look.
Yeah. Take it.
That's, well, I didn't know you.
I believe, well, I believe that if, if there's a, there's a particular number limit, if, cause of.
It wouldn't be a public meeting.
It wouldn't be a public meeting if, what is it? Three?
Three, well, yeah, and I'm going to have to talk about that later when I talk about my, soon to be good. But yes, three people on a board makes it a public meeting.
So less than three board members, it's not a public meeting, so it's allowed.
I will say though, that with that suggestion, I would like to be notified of that first, um, just so that I can have in my record that such a visit happened. And also if you do plan on doing a drive-by, if you're just going to drive by and drop off your trash and you look over the window, that's fine, but if you decide to pull over and then sneak on the property to see it, please don't tell me that part.
How about not do it? Let's just say our.
Just make your dump run.
The Board's, the Board's opinion on it is not to do that.
Right. Or at least tell me so I can tell them so that they don't have their, uh.
Arrested, Waldor Board Member arrested for trespassing would be a nice.
Oh, it's a personal problem. Yeah, that, that's quite a headline, actually.
But it is possible for you to meet with him sometime.
Yeah, I, and again, I, this is just me speaking personally. I mean, I'm a visual type person. I'm relatively inexperienced on the Board, so I think this would just be a win-win for me.
I think you're, you're doing the right, John, you're doing the right thing because that's how you process it. Okay, I don't have no problem with that. Is there anything else on this? Pre-application. Max, did you have any?
I have some questions.
Yeah, I was about to say, Tom, Tom, he had a list of questions he wanted asked.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it should be done once the Board has done with their questions. I didn't expect this to go for an hour, but it should. Yep.
Always does. So just going through the, the site plan review, came up with some questions. One from the engineers, in the general performance standards, you have some, some flooding and stormwater standards. And they were wondering if any, you know, stormwater permitting that is done through DEP, if that satisfies those standards. So they will be doing that. They'll get their permit by rule. Um, they'll have erosion and sedimentation control plan and.
So you're saying if DEP requires a stormwater management plan?
Which they will.
Which they will.
Yep.
Then we'll know if.
Will it satisfy your rules?
So that, that plan allows for the one in 50 year flooding event?
Mm-hmm. I believe so.
Which requirement are we talking about?
Um, let's, I think it was. Yeah, general standards, Article four. Must comply with Article eight floodplain management.
Mm-hmm.
Which this isn't in a floodplain.
Yeah, some of these you won't apply to the project, like the historical architectural standards.
Right. And we've done, you know, we've done our letter to the Maine Historic Preservation Commission and it confirmed there's nothing to worry about with the project and we're avoiding the cemetery.
However, my underst- let me, Max, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that, that, that plan that you submit to DEP that gets their approval, that needs to be included in your application, especially including the main, there'll be, they would, um, I'm a, I believe that there would be, should be a ma- a maintenance plan for maintaining the, that system that you install. And those maintenance commitments are then also part of the application that we approve. Cause I believe that overall this, the town's, the town's requirements for that is simply sort of match the state's, right?
Is this stormwater or floodplain? Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think the stormwater management we're dealing with, I'd have to find the exact language.
It says designed so that post-development storm runoff does not exceed pre-development.
Yes, for two, 10 and 25 year frequency storm events. I believe that's what you're talking about.
Yes.
Page four nineteen to four twenty for anyone at home who has a copy of the ordinance and is looking at it for some reason.
And so since this is being submitted as a stormwater PBR through the DEP, it's, it doesn't, it's saying the project does not meet those standards because it doesn't qualify for those standards. So it, that satisfies you as well, is, is my question.
Right. I would just include, as Scott suggested, I would include the document from them that states that, that the, that's not a part of that.
Yep. And then we kind of touched on the clearing in the resource protection area.
Let's talk more about that.
Yeah. So I think in your ordinance, it's, it's the forty percent rule, you know, you have to do the calculation that you're not removing more than forty percent and there's other specifications that can't be an area this big by this big and.
Forty percent for the overall 250 foot setback?
I believe, um. I think it's within a designated area, you know.
That was within a hundred feet.
It's broken into smaller segments that.
Yeah, within a hundred, it's even more strict and then.
Yes, but, but now I'm also.
But that's shoreland.
That's shoreland, not wetlands. This, I still.
This is part of our protection map.
Oh, so that makes it.
Right. The one on the, the eastern portion of the wetlands, those are in the resource protection. So they're under a lot, so they're under a lot of stricter rules.
Yes, but where's, that's, that's not the same as the shoreland. There's, or is, are the requirements the same?
There's the broad shoreline zone.
Yep.
And a subsection of that is the resource protection.
Yes.
And it follows the same setbacks.
It's all under Article seven.
So it's all in Article seven. So that, so I believe that, right, there, there's a, there's a graded, the larger part of that restriction on the, on the trees is within a hundred feet.
Right. And then out to two fifty, it's slightly less of a restriction.
Correct. Yes, yep. So.
So there, I mean, in an ideal world for them, they would like to cut everything over five feet for shade management. But we will fit it in to what, what rules you have.
Okay. Yes.
Everything within the 250 feet or the 50 feet that you talked about?
Yeah, just that, that sliver where you can see, you know, the, the resource protection bubble and then the tree clearing limit is beyond it on the east side there and on the south.
What sliver? I don't understand what you're talking about.
So.
With this east side, right?
So this is the clearing limit and this is the resource.
So we're talking about this stuff?
Yep. So this stuff, this stuff.
Why is this stuff not as important as this stuff? Why is it, oh, it's because of that setback. That's straight.
It's important for their shade.
The fence is straight and this is the setback.
So we're not putting anything, any actual structures or panels into that. That's not dealing with that. But for clearing, it seems like there may be some wiggle room to get some clearing in there. And even if it's going out and flagging the tallest pine trees, you know, or something like that.
Well, I imagine whatever map gets approved, since this thing's going to be here for a number of decades, we have to be kind of clear where that line of cutting can happen.
So as I understand the way this is presented, the fence line will be the clearing line?
Um, not necessarily. So sometimes they'll, on that south and east side, they'll be clearing beyond the fence.
That kind of, um, curlicued tree line is what he's saying, he'd clear from the fence to that foliage edge?
Yep.
You'd take down the tallest stuff greater than five feet.
That's, that's what they would like to do, but I mean, that might not fit into that resource protection clearing restriction that you have.
I would think that one would be a, that's an easy solution, but a hard sell.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But maybe this.
I like to see the math for, for that.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. You know what the lowest altitude of, of the sun is, how far you are from, how far the trees are from the, from the solar panel, to the elevation. And then anything taller than that needs to go. You just, you could wind up with, with a triangle. Show us the triangle and make a case for it. But I think they're taking the easy way out. Once, maybe once they do the math, it won't be as, it won't be as, as, as much as it's shown.
Yeah.
But that's east, low east sun.
Yep.
Very well.
But that, that, I mean, I think part of that too is, I think, and I think it would behoove us as a Board, and Max, maybe you can help us with this, is to make sure that all of us, especially you, quickly understand, because it is, the, the tree cutting limits depending on the, depend on the distance from the shore and the, of the, that edge. And that is most severe over the first hundred feet, I believe. It's where the, it's a forty percent limit, et cetera. So there may be, this may not be that much of an issue, but I think we need to, I got to go back to that section and make sure relative to resource protection. And I think, I think you should do that and make sure we're all on the same page before.
Yeah.
We don't, I don't, I, I think we ought to have a clear understanding, everybody of that, before you come back.
Okay. And would it be helpful, you know, if, if I went out and took pictures and maybe I, maybe I only end up seeing 10 big pine trees that need to come down in, in those two slivers and without doing the calculation, you know, kind of.
Yeah, well, it certainly would help.
Give us a report.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I think, right, we have to, if we have a good understanding of specifically what you'd like to do and if that's, if there isn't a, uh, deviation from what the requirements are, we have to really clearly understand that so we know where.
And I think this call out, clear vegetation greater than five feet, that's, you know, stock language for shade management areas. So that's why I came with that question in mind.
Yeah, okay.
How about driveway permits? Anything along those lines that would be needed?
That's.
That's pretty straightforward, I thought.
Yeah, I think that's.
It would be more for.
DOT, right?
DOT usually does it on state roads, but.
No, I'm sorry, um, it's public works.
Oh, okay.
John Dagle will handle that.
Is there already a cover there too? I mean, is there already a, you said there's.
There's already an entrance, a good entrance. Yeah, they really wouldn't do much upgrading, but it's just kind of officially making it a driveway, you know?
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll give that.
You'll do, okay, okay. Cause that, since, well, it already sort of exists, but it's, you're not going to have, you're just going to have maintenance. It's not a traffic. It shouldn't be.
I mean, there'll be trucks and stuff during construction.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Be a limited window.
Right. Okay.
Speaking of trucks, are they working their way from this, how do they, have they left up, between the rows to, uh, get trucks up and down?
Uh, it's a good question. I think you can get maybe, you know, not a.
Painting their way out of the room.
Big pieces of equipment, but yeah, I think that's what they do. They work their way out, you know?
We're busted out here.
Good luck with that. Anyway, it doesn't matter.
Really, there is no, that's true. There is no.
Not easy.
Accessing this design, if you want to.
Well, that's what you, so you also have two equipment areas, area two and area three. So I would think that you want to be able to run a truck along.
Well, there is, this is a road.
Yeah.
This red is a road, but only goes to there, yeah.
And I think that's, you know, a fourteen foot wide, just gravel road.
Gravel road.
This is.
Would there ever be a reason to bring emergency equipment in?
Um, I think one of your requirements was to see where the closest fire hydrant was. I don't know how you'd know that besides going up and down the road, I guess, but.
It's probably down towards the river, isn't it?
There wouldn't be a fire hydrant on that road.
It's probably, yeah.
But not on that road.
Right down the street.
But they'll have, uh, on the gate, usually they put, uh, I forget what they call it, but, you know, like a combination lock that the fire department would have access to. So if they did need to get in there, they could.
I was, I was actually thinking more about the road itself, whether or not the fire department, if they needed to get access, if they, if they consider this a site where they might have to go in and do something, then they have requirements in terms of road width and, um, yeah, access that, that might. But I can't imagine that they'd have to go back there.
Yeah.
So I'm just tossing it out there, maybe for Max to follow up on or.
Yeah, probably, you know, the inverters.
See if there is any, any reason.
Transformers and the battery here, it would be the only places I would imagine.
Yeah, then is that fourteen foot gravel road adequate for them? It probably is, but it's just.
Well, it would be part of the.
It's pretty standard. Turning around though.
The entrance permit for your concern.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, yes, the fee for the application, I think it's fifty dollars.
Three megawatts for, oh.
For the library?
I think Max can answer that.
That's, that's the problem. I can't give you an answer right now because it was also just updated, so.
Oh, okay.
I don't, and also I don't know how I'm supposed to calculate it considering that if it's supposed to be similar to tax, uh, state issue.
Right.
I'll have to answer that afterwards.
Okay. I think you, at least on what was on the website, it said, you know, fifty dollars plus fifty dollars per acre or something like that, but.
And that might be it. I need to confirm that with the co-enforcement officer.
Okay. And are there any other sort of forms that are included with the application, a building permit or?
You can fill out the building permit with it. Stan Waltz, who is the co-enforcement officer, he would be the one to sign off on that, not the planning board.
And that's kind of part of the application process, right?
Uh, it's more of an after.
After, after approved here.
Yeah, after approved here, then he would sign it off. There is the entrance permit with John Dagle, but I'll give that to you, that you can include with it. You're not going to be in the shoreline zone at all?
Um, not with any structures, just potentially clearing.
I'll double check to make sure that that doesn't have to be included. But other than that, I believe those are the only three documents that are relevant to this.
How old is the cemetery?
Um, I would say the stones that I saw are like just before 1900.
And is it fenced or stone?
There's like a little, uh, rock wall around it.
And your road is.
H O C H family.
And the, your road is away from that?
Yep, to the, uh, to the north of that, yeah. Which is like, kind of where the existing road kind of goes.
I would recommend that for the application, you say how far away the road or any, just show. I would recommend that for the application, you say how far away the road or any, just show the twenty-five foot buffer of the cemetery.
Okay.
So when you hire people to come mow here, maybe people, maybe nice to take care of the cemetery while you're at it.
Someone had actually recently maintained it when I was there.
Yeah. You might suggest that to your, it's a public service.
For, for, to the Hook family.
Unusual installation like this and that we don't do them every other day. Who does co enforcement? If we come up with a certain list of of obligations or the, the permit is gonna have certain obligations, in terms of the, the.
Who's gonna make sure it's properly installed?
And that the construction runoff is done properly and then all that.
We're all commercial projects, that's usually done by Chuck Campbell. I'll have to, I'll have to confirm all of this, because as you say, we don't do this every day. This is the only one I've ever had to deal with. But I think it's mostly just gonna be between Stan and Chuck Campbell, pretty much.
Bob, any idea on that, what was done at the?
I don't.
Was that the, no?
Um, sorry.
How big was that one, Bob?
Hundred and ten KW.
Yeah, yeah, this one's roughly thirty times the size.
Yeah.
It's big.
Just a, just a bit bigger.
Anything else?
Um, maybe you could just give a brief summary of kind of the whole application process, you know, once, when's an ideal time for me to get it in before the next meeting and then what happens and?
Max is your guy.
Well, yeah. Um, I would love to have a first draft copy of whatever application you're giving, three weeks before meeting. Just so that gives me a week to review it, see if there's anything that's missing, something you should add in. Because if, better I say it then, rather than with my gut feeling of, you should probably have this, rather than you coming to the board and them saying, well, you didn't have this right here, what the heck, and then we're waiting another month. And then I would have it all sent out, at least. And then I send the information to them ten days before the meeting, I'll send out notices to the neighbors and to the local newspapers, same time. So three weeks is when I would love, and I especially need to enforce that now, uh, three weeks for this application before a meeting. So if you're planning on doing it in March, I think.
You have a week.
Yeah, I think next week, I would need it. But again, first draft, it doesn't need to be complete. If you have other stuff that's gonna go towards it, it can be added on later. I just need to see, like, the basic narrative, pretty much.
And as far as plans go, you need, you know, fully engineered site plans as part of it, or, you know, something a little more refined than this suitable?
I like the setbacks a little bit clearer and the colors are not quite, I mean, it's really hard to see the road right now and the, against the other.
Yeah, I probably would get rid of the the aerial background and, or at least have another copy that didn't have.
I think another copy, cause actually the aerial really, I mean, we appreciate this as a pre-application and the aerial, this particular view was very helpful, cause I know a couple of us were trying to figure out where it was and it helped a lot to have this.
But I think, Tom, the the direct answer to your question, I don't think everything has to be complete, but the more complete, the better.
Yeah.
And then if anything changes materially from the application to the final, then it requires coming, at least coming back to Max.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, layout wise, we're pretty, pretty well there.
Yeah.
Just, you know, there might be designs to the road, whether it's a ditch or even little stuff like that, that the engineers get their hands on.
Well, and all the questions that you had and that we had, and the discussion here, whatever you can capture in the application in terms of laying those out in hands, putting them in print, is very helpful. So that's where Max can.
Yep.
Can help as, he knows the kinds of things that we're looking for, so.
And one other item just comes to mind, is as we sit here and, or I sit here and think about forty years and that the, the expected life of the solar farm, what happens in year forty-one? What is, what is the long-term maintenance obligation of of the different parties and?
So really, that will be specifically spelled out in the lease agreement with the landowner. And they'll have a thirty-year lease agreement, but the option to go, you know, five-year increments after that, just so long as the panels are still functioning and operating well. And if they're not, then they'll take it down, they'll remove every bit of stuff from the site and regrade it and revegetate it via meadow after, and allow it to revegetate naturally.
And if the company no longer exists in forty years?
It's a good question, I don't know. I mean, I think that's, you know, something that's vetted by their lawyers and the landowner and they're bound by their lease agreement, so.
And this former, this other, um, right-of-way here, that's going through the property, it seems like a road going parallel to the Noble Bar Road? Is that what I'm looking at with the big jog here?
I think that is a setback, fifty-foot property line setback, which is just, I think, something that this solar design company puts on everything just to be conservative.
Where are you looking?
I'm, I'm looking at this whole thing above here, and then it goes off the road.
Fifty-foot setback from property line.
There's an odd-shaped piece of property there.
Okay, another one here?
Buffer zone.
Okay.
So, take it as a buffer zone.
Yes. So your, I mean, your ordinances may even allow them to be closer with that, but that's just what they start with, to be safe and.
I think for that one, I think I messaged Joe about this road set, so it needs to be seventy-five feet from the road. But I see that mentioned at least, it was somewhere near the bottom, three hundred and eighty-four feet from the nearest panel and then thirty feet from any property lines.
Okay.
So fifty feet actually goes beyond that.
So that does come to mind, one, if there isn't some documentation in the application about the lease, normally in these cases, we need proof of ownership of the land or a, a copy or something, not necessarily the whole lease, but at least something that's, that you have a legal right to do this on the property.
And what, what he's provided me, not for this site, but another site I'm working on, is basically the whole lease agreement and it's just things are redacted that, you know.
Okay, sure, okay. Okay, so that, will that include the, the, the items that we just discussed about what happens at the end?
Yes.
Great, okay, perfect.
And so the sun rays, who's applying this permission, okay. Okay.
And I'll also just say that, um, this goes over to properties, correct?
Right. Oh, yeah, that was another question you had brought up.
Right.
Two different owners?
No.
Nope, same owner.
Both should be under the same owner of the deed.
Yep.
I don't know if the lease has it in there or, but if, in any events Travis wants to sell, this should be protected so that if it is being sold and split off in any way, that it maintains the setbacks and other zoning-related things.
Yep, setbacks, decommissioning, you know, probably, I'm sure that's in there.
So there, maybe there could be another site plan that just talks about the property and where the project is on the two properties.
Yep.
So you're saying if, if the owner subdivides the property or sells off?
I'm saying if Travis wakes up in two years and says, I'm gonna sell all of my property in Noble Bar, I'm gonna go. There is a property line that goes through, it's more near the southern part of it. So if he sells and the north lot and the south lot go to two different people, you now have a solar farm that's about to go over someone's property.
So he already, he already has two lots there, is what you're saying?
Right, Travis owns both.
Gotcha.
This is something similar that we had.
Right, oh, it's shown right there.
When Moody's came in and they wanted to do their expansion, they had to buy the property just to the south or they at least had to get rid of the property line, cause even though they owned it, they had two different names on the deeds. So it was a very minor legal item.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, since there's no, nothing, no official application to vote on, we don't need to call for a motion and I think we're finished.
What would the motion say?
We had a great time.
Oh, the, the meeting.
Saying we don't need, no, this part of the meeting, this, this part of the meeting, I think we're done, right? You wish for something else?
No, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
That's very helpful.
Very interesting. I'll give you my.
Tom, cemetery isn't spilling that way.
Well, that's gonna be on the report too.
Oh, it's grounded, very, very denied.
Perfect.
I wasn't gonna bring it up.
Give you a call, email me, whatever, yeah.
Okay, what would be a good time?
So let's, as a board, we can move to old business.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
They're making a radio.
Yes, great.
If you wanna talk about anything.
Talk about anything? Okay. I don't have any old business. I'm waiting for a.
You got, you want the big plans or?
I think this is, this is great. I think Max might want that.
Max, you want this?
The big, the really big one?
Okay. No, I didn't like it. Back door.
Okay, yeah.
You don't have to pull that button.
Let's see, maybe when he leaves, he'll draw the rest of Bob and Mr. Matthews. I don't know. No, not so lucky, Mr. Phillips. Excuse me. Hello?
Hey, my two favorite people, you gotta get out of here.
Or stop talking. You don't have to leave, they just have to stop talking, so we can go on with our meeting.
You've got Ted's map.
Yeah, someone's need Ted's map?
There, Ted's.
We're almost done, I think, anyway, but, cause I don't have any old business and Max is by leaving demonstrating that he doesn't have.
I think we need to help Sarah with her car issue, but I think you've solved it already.
That's another, that's another whole thing.
No, I'm happy with my car.
Max, did you have any old business or any other comments that you wanted to make?
Um, so I know I said we were gonna do a moratorium on marijuana dispensaries.
Oh, yeah, seven o'clock.
But, um.
What? Yeah, seven o'clock, we were having a mortgage, a meeting.
But because this has actually taken so long and land use committee is actually moving on very well, what's likely gonna happen is that's just gonna be thrown into when the land use committee finishes its ordinance and hopefully all that will be settled in November, so no special meeting needs to be done for that.
That's good news, okay.
To my knowledge.
Okay.
Is this woman here, cause of marijuana?
This is a, a neighbor of Jim and mine, Marilyn, who's checking out the planning board, I believe. Hi, Marilyn.
Hello.
No, no public notices had to be sent out because we weren't gonna hold one, so. I am going to be, going to American Yunagi's current setup up in Franklin, Maine.
Oh, you didn't do that yet?
I have not done that yet. I was, I'm gonna be doing that on February twenty-first, so next Friday. Ted has asked to come along because he hasn't been up to Franklin, Maine in some time, and I was fine with that. I'm also bringing an individual from Midcoast Economic Development District, Brian Dankhouse, along with me because of the thing that Maquette is doing separately with them. I will invite anyone else who wants to come up for the twenty-first to come see it. It's not changing their application whatsoever. Well, I say that now, actually, after I realize something, but. It's just seeing what their facility looks like, it's a quarter of the scale of what they're gonna have. We plan on leaving around eleven AM on Friday next week. Because Ted is coming with us, I only ask that if someone wants, from this board comes, it's only one member, just so I don't have to trigger a public site visit. But again, it's still open to one person and I will carpool people up, so.
So you're considered a member of the planning board? So you're number, number three?
I'm not considered a member of the planning board.
If you get, if you get to three, it's, it's a public meeting. Ted plus one.
Right.
Gets you under the limit.
I'm going up as a, I'm going up for my Maquette side of it, not my town planner side of it, so.
Okay.
On that note of American Yunagi, actually, I got an email from George Seaver and pretty much everyone involved with the American Yunagi project. They wanna come in and show all the permits they've received, as well as just getting a title block signed from the planning board just as an update for what they've done. Uh, we gave them the extension in November. This is just more something they would like, just to feel more comfortable. I don't have any problems with that.
Why do they wanna do this? What's, why are they concerned? What, what do they feel uneasy about?
Well, one thi, well, similar to this one, um, they are gonna be doing it over two lots of land. If something happens to George Seaver in the next week or so, and someone buys one lot but not the other, where does that leave American Yunagi? So they're going through this whole process, so they're updating their maps, they're updating everything. And so they want to just have the planning board sign it just to show, well, also there's the conditional approval that was set that this Maine DEP would give them permits and everything. So it's more of an, it's more of them presenting an update more than anything.
So the two lot thing wasn't clear when they came in first time on the site map?
That's my question.
Well, no, they're aware that because George owns both lots, he's allowed to do it, but they're updating the deed. So they're saying, all right, we know it's fine, but does the planning board know it's, it's, they just wanna make sure everyone's all on the same page, pretty much.
Okay, but it's, but, so if we're asked to sign something, then we have to have a motion, right? We have to be approving something and we would be, be approving not an application, but an addendum? What are we?
It is similar to amendment pretty much.
Okay.
It's just you seeing their maps, seeing their permits, the conditions that were set when you initially approved it and if it's fine with you.
So the, the deed.
I know.
So we're on a, I don't recall there being any discussion of it being two separate lots.
It wasn't.
Both owned by George, but it was there.
Right.
So we, so if we approved it.
I also was just told all this, maybe an hour before, I had to scramble to get all this prepared. So I need to talk with Bill about this as well, see if that's even.
Right, because I'm, 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 I'm sure everybody here trusting that we would be happy to have a discussion with them.
Right.
But it's unclear what, what's actionable that we should be doing that, that's not an official.
Yeah, pine tree zone is the sixty-one acres, whatever, is made up of a couple of different, actual different surveys, different properties. Is that what you, that's what this is? I'm, it's taking, well, I'm, it's just kinda funny though, I thought we had done a really good job moving that right through.
Yeah.
It has to take more time to, it's a, it's a service if they feel better about it, but I don't wanna have to go through something again twice if we don't have to, so what did?
And that's what I will check.
Right, and be doing something that is then, we're, we're doing something incomplete without doing the whole, without really looking at the whole thing, it's unclear what they're trying to change, that's, so if you can clarify.
I don't think you have the whole story.
Yeah.
Yet, we need to find out what it is. Who's, who, who is uncomfortable and why?
Right.
Yeah.
Max, isn't some of this stuff just legal issues? I mean, that's not a portfolio, is it?
Well, and that's, bless you again.
Yeah.
And that's what I said in the first chain of it all, where they said, does the planning board need to do anything? And I said, no, if this is just a simple, you know, putting it all under one lot, that's more of just a deed change. I did say that in the beginning, and then it was five or so years later, again, in the span of an hour.
Okay.
Of, we just wanna make sure that ten years from now, you understand it, but will your, twenty years from now, will your eventual replacement feel the same way?
Does the planning board care?
Yeah.
For, for, for me, this is, this is a civil issue, commercial civil issue, not a planning board issue.
Right, cause, and, cause the whole thing was pretty well documented, so it's in the files, so, okay, we'll wait, we'll wait for some clarity from.
Yes.
the files, so, okay, we'll wait, we'll wait for some clarity from, from you.
Yes, I, yeah, I, I didn't have too much time to prepare a whole thing for you.
Well, this is, this is fine, we'll understand.
Aren't you glad you brought it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, that is a possibility for next month.
Yeah, okay.
But, one guarantee, I say guarantee, but one other item that will be on the planning board next month for a pre-application, is for thirty-five Orf's Corner, there's an individual who wants to do sort of a, I guess, a retreat type of business.
Is that right at the corner, for the auction houses? Wrong, I'm sorry, wrong intersection.
Yeah, I, I don't believe it is.
Okay.
It's more of sort of a leisure-type setup, saunas and campgrounds. I was hoping to speak with the applicant today, but he was a bit busy, so I'll talk with him more tomorrow, specifically about what he is wanting to do.
Okay.
Where is thirty-five Orf's Corner?
I can...
Orf's Corner is, is where the, the Madam of Dority is, right? Is that?
No, I thought Orf...
Is it?
South thirty-two.
Thirty-two, past the, past the Nobleboro Road.
There's a church up there.
There's a split off to the right, I thought that's where it was.
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking, too?
Yeah, yeah, up, up where the...
Yeah, there's a church, there's a church, and then there's a right turn.
Okay. Yeah, it's a little Orf's.
It's Orf's Corner, too.
Yeah, now I know, that's good.
It's, it's in this...
It's up there.
Yeah, it's in this little cluster down here.
So neighbors.
Yeah, tons of neighbors.
But, but also lots of open country, it's a bit of both.
There's a ton of neighbors.
It's a small lots.
Oh, yeah.
They will...
Yeah, it's right off that, not far from Orf's Corner, not far from the turn.
So they will possibly be coming next month for a pre-application, and, um, I don't know about the sun rays one.
Okay.
If there is the interest in doing site visits, again, please tell me ahead of time, I also may just wanna come tag along, just for fun.
Well, John was getting...
I'm gonna, I've got his number, Tom Tatro, and I'm gonna call him.
All right.
And do, do that. I mean, he said he'd eat pretty much anytime, so I'll...
All right, I, I would love to come along, if that's...
Okay, let me just...
And we can talk about that more afterwards.
Okay, sure. That'd be great.
Sure.
Okay.
Max, do you want the minutes to give the name of the party that's having this pre-application for thirty-five Orf's Corner?
I'd like to keep that secret, just because...
Keep it secret, all right.
Just because, in the past, there have been some people who say, "Oh yeah, I wanna come to the planning board for this", and they never show up, so I don't wanna give their name if they don't wanna...
But you, I can say thirty-five Orf's Corner, but just not give a name?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Unless anyone else has...
Just one question, uh, is there anything about that A.G. Gray building, is that, if you, is there any movement on that? I mean, the guy hasn't, there's nothing, is it...
Last, last I recall is that we're doing a background check into his previous work, but that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
And then nothing has been forthcoming?
No, no other developments have happened.
He's got big projects up in Portland and Manjoy Hill, I used to live there.
And I think that's part of what we're doing right now, we're just looking at those projects as well as some past ones he's done.
Things take a long time.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions from the planning board?